Well, thank you for returning it.
I call the January 27th, 2020 Committee to Hold the Order. Clerk will call the roll.
Brereton?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine present?
Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to our annual fun exercise of the annual city budget. Under public comment, we have no one registered to speak this evening, nor do we have a public forum. Under reports, officers, boards, and special committees, I'd like to take a moment to thank Public Works and our Snow guys for the great job they did cleaning up the city on Saturday. That was a task. Under public safety unfinished business, we have none. Under public safety new business, we have a couple of items. Number one, or number letter A, is donation to the police department from Walmart Corporation. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This would be reference motion to accept Walmart donation. Please be advised that the Belvidere Police Department has received a donation in the amount of $3,250. Check number 0447242 from Walmart. Walmart has donated this money to the Belvidere Police Department's Feed the Need Initiative. The money will be used to fund three satellite mobile food pantries. The Belvidere Police Department will host the events at or near the Belvidere Police Department. The food disbursement will be done by uniformed officers and volunteers in police service at the events. Motion to accept the donation of $3,250 from the Walmart Corporation for the funding of the three mobile food pantries.
We have motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Alman Crawford, seconded by Alman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor. Yes, Alman Freeman.
I was just wondering, so where do you guys go purchase the food from? Is it like from Sam's Club type places, or do you just go give it back to Walmart?
We've gone to Walmart before. We've gone to Aldi's, and we've done a little bit of shopping over in Rofford. It depends where we can get the best deals and get the most food for our money.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing not all is in favor of approval. Will, when your name is called, no, will signify by saying aye. It's easy tonight.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Sounds unanimous to me. Under item B, we will have the financial year 21 police budget presentation.
So police, this is on. So police has the honor of going first tonight. We're gonna start with their budget draft. Let me try and get the screen bigger for ya. Keep going bigger. Whoop, that didn't do what I wanted it to do. Hopefully, you're able to see. Otherwise, you can follow along in your budget book. We'll be starting. We'll be starting with page 1 of 20 under police expenditures. This just shows a summary. The difference between your current fiscal year 20 and your proposed fiscal year 21 is a 3.58% increase. What I can say about it to start with is most of that is your uncontrollable costs, your increase in wages. It's a 2.5% this year per contract, so that's something that you are held to by union contract. The tax levy, I'm sorry, the police pension request, the $1,326,460, you had already voted on that. So you'll see that in here as well. And then the health insurance. So those are some of the major increases in his budget that are uncontrollable. So I will pass it over to the chief.
Thanks, Becky. Yeah, as Becky had stated, salaries and police pension total $196,023 of the total $248,485 increase throughout the entire budget, leaving just $52,462 in all other areas of the police department's budget excluding capital expenditures.
Alman Freeman?
So before we leave page 1, chief, I just had a, I don't know if it's for you or Becky, but under the K-9 program expenses, typically, we've ranged about $3,000 all the way up to our fiscal year 18, where it jumped to over $15,000. Last year in 19, it went back down to $3,700 for the budget. This year, we did 7 grand, and now we're looking for $8,800. How is it that it's going from like roughly 3 grand up to 15, and then now we're looking at 7 to 8?
I can, back to 2015, I'm being advised that the, one of the K-9s had surgery that was an expense above and beyond what we normally see. And beyond that, I can only speculate that, what's that?
That year, Officer Parker got a new police dog. The dog that he got actually had a fall, and he ingested into his stomach. They had to do surgery to remove the fall from the stomach. That cost was, and I believe it was done at UW Madison. That's why that cost was so much that particular year. And I believe there was another surgery due to the labor specifically, or something was last year.
Okay, but even now, like we're, like it's typically been around 3 grand. And even, you know, last year and this year, we're like doubling that.
Yeah, and looking at page 14, the K-9 program expenses, we look at about $3,000 in just dog food alone, in addition to the veterinary care that we have to budget for, which is approximately $2,500. And then equipment, which runs about $750. Kennel and boarding for when the K-9 handlers go on vacation or are unavailable. They have to board the K-9s, in addition to one of the new pieces of equipment that we're gonna be requesting for one of the K-9 vehicles.
Question. When we had to retire some dogs because of the change in the law, did that add, did we get them even swapped for new dogs, or have we done that yet, or?
The one K-9 was essentially exchanged for, even up, because it was a relatively new dog, which was Monty. And the other K-9, which was Box, was retired. And we received grants and donations to cover the $12,000 in expenses for that dog.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for page 1? Moving on to page 2, you'll see two new initiatives for the police department. Prior to 2008, the police department had a full-time community service officer and part-time community service officer to accomplish the same responsibilities that we're asking two part-time community service officers to handle. And as you can imagine, the violations code enforcement, as well as the responsibilities and workload, has not gone down since. It's only increased. So we are asking for, first, a community service officer to help with code enforcement. I know at several meetings throughout this last year, we've had several discussions at the council level regarding the code enforcement that Kara handles and the workload that she tries to accomplish, and how difficult that is for just one person. So we're requesting a community service officer, a code enforcement officer, on a part-time basis to assist with that, as well as absorb some of the ordinance violations that the city patrol officers handle currently. So it would free them up to handle calls for service and be proactive as well. I can take questions on that, or I can continue on with the next initiative if you want.
Alman Freeman?
So what would be the difference if we hired a community service officer, or if we just gave Kara a part-time helper here at City Hall?
That would be the idea. Essentially, it would be administered through the police department. However, Kara and the building department would have direct oversight of that person. They would also be able to assist the police department if we had some things that we needed assistance on, but primarily, it would be to assist Kara.
But they wouldn't have like to go through all the police training and all of that expense that a typical officer would do?
No, ma'am. That's the idea. They would not be certified whatsoever. It would be a part-time civilian position. Okay. If there's no other questions on that, I'll move on to the fleet maintenance. Okay. It's just been pointed out in your packets for the fleet maintenance, part-time position, that should also only be 19 hours. Well, we're not looking for 40 hours a week at 1729. That should be 19 hours a week at 1729, plus Social Security and Medicare. So when looking at our community policing program this year, we made some assessments and determined that we weren't able to achieve some of the initiatives that we had set out for the community policing program. And we identified that one of the significant reasons for that was because Officer Blankenship was inundated with non-community policing responsibilities, which prompted us to try and come up with a cost-saving measure in order for him to be able to put his focus on the community policing program, where we see the value come in. Officer Blankenship has about 10 to 20 hours a week doing vehicle maintenance-related duties to include taxiing squad cars from one of five squad car repair or installation shops, installing or fixing squad car or officer equipment, coordinating or helping set up events, including washing and detailing the squad cars. He gets supplies for department meetings or events, all of which keep him from actually doing community policing duties and can be handled by a part-time person at half the cost. Instead, what we would like Officer Blankenship to be doing in lieu of those duties would be spending more time focusing on neighborhood complaints, such as speeding, reckless driving, and being a visible presence and deterrent within those neighborhoods. Focus more on social media engagement. We do some now on Facebook and city's website, but there's definitely this one area we can improve upon, and Officer Blankenship's responsible for doing that. We would like him to coordinate an open house where the public could come in and with an escort, go around the police department. We would put on informational training like use of force, traffic stops, how we handle accidents, investigations, things like that. Just be generally available to the public. Coordinate an additional citizens' police academy at the high school. We've done a class once already, just very similar to one of our regular citizens' police academies, but geared towards high school students to get them acquainted to the life of law enforcement. Coordinate an additional citizens' police academy for multicultural citizens. This is an initiative that we had budgeted for last year, but one of which that we identified we haven't been able to do, because Officer Blankenship is inundated with these other duties. So we'd like to free him up to handle that and hopefully be able to accomplish that, that goal. We want Officer Blankenship to reach out to the primary grades through a reading program. We do this on a limited basis currently, but that too is something that we would like to expand upon, because we see a value in it in our community policing program. And then expand our current citizen police academy to a wider variety of participants. Currently, Officer Blankenship's cost at this 10 to 20 hours a week doing these non-community policing duties costs on an annual basis of $38,443.8. We're requesting that a part-time person in the amount of $18,389 take up those responsibilities. And we definitely believe that we would get the value back in our community policing program. Any questions?
Alman Porter?
That's $18,000 a year, I take it?
That is correct. Yes, sir. Okay, moving to number, to page 3, if there's no other questions. This is our overtime. Overall, our overtime budget for this year has gone down by $100. Some decreases primarily in the shift coverage line item, as well as the District 100 reimbursable. But we did have some increases as well in the area of training, SWAT call-outs and special events, as well as iDOT training. Primarily, we're looking at the cost it's going to take, given the annual increases for our officers. SWAT call-outs, roughly the same. We've had more call-outs, SWAT call-outs this year than we have previous years, and anticipate a potential increase. It's one of those numbers that ebbs and flows, but if there is a trend of an increase, we'd like to be prepared for it. Special events, primarily, we want to have the additional funds because of the expansion of the Cannon Street Strolls and the success of that. We anticipate that going forward, which is going to require additional overtime from the police department. And iDOT is dependent on the grants that we get from the State of Illinois Department of Transportation, but I will make a note that that is reimbursable 100%.
Any questions? Alman Freeman?
So up at the top, where it's, you know, actual for the fiscal years, there's only about, there's only five years that it actually went up. A couple of those were just a little bit. In 18 and 19, it actually went down. And then last year, it went up substantially 57.78%. And then, you know, this year, we're asking previous year, are we asking for plus 3%? On top of that? Why did it jump up 57.78%?
So that was the budget for this year. Currently, he's trending under that budget. That's just what was budgeted. So he's actually budgeting almost the same for next year, actually $100 less at 406,000 even, instead of 406,100. So that's just the budgeted amount, but he's trending to come in, hopefully around, my estimate, around $320,000. But like he said, it's an unknown. It just depends on the situation and circumstances that come up. Usually, this comes in under budget.
Would it be, would the incident that we had at the high school have taken a significant portion of that overtime?
We had a couple of high school incidents that would affect our overtime budget. We had two SWAT call-outs that would have significantly impacted our budget. There's a number of scenarios that plays with the budget amount as far as the overtime's concerned. If, you will make note of the shift coverage specifically. There's been plenty of years that, you know, we have people that get hurt that affect our overtime budget, because we have to hire back for shift coverage due to minimum shifts, strength, and it just depends year to year on injuries, people that we have out on maternity, and whether or not we're full-staffed. All these circumstances affect our overtime budget. If there's no other questions, I will move on to page 4, police pension. If there's any questions for Becky? Page 5. Health insurance. Any questions for Becky? Dental claims? Becky?
I did raise that just slightly. Fiscal year 19, we came in a little bit higher. The benefits did go up for dental, as well as, you know, the, it all depends. You have some younger officers with families and kids that go to the dentist more. You're more apt to spend that benefit. There's other times you're not, so we increased that just a little bit.
Page 7, uniform allowance. Majority of this is impacted by the collective bargaining agreement. The uniform increase per CPI, which I believe is cost of living, is 1.9%, which impacts the officers and sergeants, as well as chief and both deputy chiefs. Otherwise, we have a minimal increase in the vest replacement program due to the vest, vest that we purchased going up slightly, so we had to account for that. Otherwise, uniform allowance for the anticipation of the, of two new hires. That may or may not happen, but it's something that we planned for. And on the off chance that we do have to replace somebody due to retirement, and that would impact us at 2959, where last year, we were at 1452, where we had budgeted for one. So. Then the vest, molly, and name tag reflects an increase in the vests and molly equipment that we purchased for all the officers. Any questions? Page 8, training. We have a increase of $7,600. Primarily, the bulk of that comes from the anticipation of two replacement officers, which at the cost of $6,800, that comes from what we had paid to send an officer to the Police Training Institute, or CELEA, this last year. And that was 6,800. So obviously, if we're planning on two, you double that, get 13,600. Otherwise, everything else stays status quo.
Yes, Alman Freeman?
So chief, other than, you know, the obvious new officer, new hire training, and, you know, when we got tasers, everybody had to be trained. But how often do our officers go for renewed training, and what are they training for? You know, when I go through our bills payable every month, there's always a lot of training for the police department, and I've always been curious, what are they training for? Is it just updating every year? Do they have to recertify, or what?
Both of that. It's mandatory trainings that the department has, which is active shooter that we do twice a year, defensive tactics that we do twice a year. We do firearms training on a monthly basis, but besides that, all of our officers have mandates that are set by statute through the state that the officers have to attend and accomplish in order to get grants from the, through the state. When we got the grant for the digital cameras, all of our officers had to have all of their mandated training needs met, and otherwise, they wouldn't provide us with those grant funds. It's domestic violence, sex assault, criminal law, Illinois Vehicle Code, juvenile law. I mean, those are just a handful. They're, yeah, it's significant. And all of our officers have to attend all of that training. And we do a, what I believe to be a phenomenal job through Deputy Chief Wallace and Deputy Chief Gardner, to regulate that training and make sure that the officers get the most efficient and cost-effective training possible.
Any other questions for page 8?
Repairs and maintenance equipment, total went up $2,505. The bulk of that is the Marco printer maintenance, which essentially is the maintenance, the printer program, where Marco will maintain and provide toner for all of our printers throughout the police department, and I believe the contract is throughout the city. It's been deemed to be very cost-effective, especially for the police department, when we had to buy our own toner for all of the printers. It was a significant cost, and this is, from what I understand, a significant cost savings. So. Otherwise, the only other increase, we're looking at Lexus Nexus, which is a web-based investigative software that our detectives primarily use to look up individuals that they may have on an investigation, court records, thing of that nature. And that was just a cost increase to use the website. Any questions? Page 10, repairs and maintenance vehicles. This has gone up just under $12,000, bulk of which was the squad car maintenance. And that came at taking our six-month cost analysis and then doubling it. And that's what we would have been at. At six months, we're at about $51,000. So if you project that out to 12 months, we get $102,000, of which I discovered after the fact, for last year, we also had approximately $22,000 in reimbursed expenses from insurance companies for squad car accidents that were not our fault. So that was also figured into there. Any questions?
Marsha?
How many squads do we currently have, chief?
Alman Frank?
Do we anticipate we're gonna buy more this year, squad cars?
Yes. We do anticipate.
Five or?
Yeah, that'll be in the capital expenditures.
Okay, so we get that later?
Yes, ma'am.
Question. With the new program, buying extended warranties, so we don't end up with cars at the end up with cars at the end of life that cost us significant dollars, are we, how close are we to completing that cycle?
We currently have eight in the program. We have bought eight cars that are all under extended warranty, up to 100,000 miles.
We aren't seeing the benefit in that yet because they're so brand-new that they aren't having any mechanical issues, but as they get closer to the end of their life, when they start having major medical, or major medical, major maintenance issues, they will pay for themselves significantly. And then we will know all of the costs that we'll have for those maintenance as opposed to guessing at this point.
So the program is in place to eventually avoid a lot of these end-of-life expenses that old squads have cost us in the past?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and as we go forward for the capital expenses, we can give you some examples of some of the maintenance that, you know, were required to pay for on some of these older squads, which prompt us to try and rotate these vehicles out before they become too costly. If there's no other questions on page 10, move on to 11, telephone and utilities. We're not looking at any increase for that. I'll take any questions. Page 12. Physical exams, which is regulated by the collective bargaining agreement. I'll take any questions? Are you referring to the Verizon AT&T or local service?
Yeah, this, two, two different things. Yeah, this is their cellphones and also their Starcom radios, which is a larger expense. Yeah, the, the phone service comes out of, right now, for their phones comes out of the public safety building, cost that we pay to the county.
Okay, to move on to 12. Back to physical exams. Any questions on that page? 13, community policing. Here we're looking at the same budget as we had requested last year. Again, that reflects additional Citizen Police Academy, an open house, all of which we had budgeted for, but at this point, we haven't been able to fulfill those initiatives. Well, we still are hopeful that we'll be able to do that, but would request that we keep that in the budget for next year in the, for the potential of being able to, to use those and do those things next year. And just as a reminder that our VIPs this year with all of the events that they've worked and all of the parades that they've done, they've saved the city over $75,000 because that's overtime that we haven't had to, to spend because they've manned intersections and done pedestrian control for the city on the behalf of the police department. So just like to make note of that. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Freeman.
So our community policing equipment and supplies is the biggest expense under this line item. What, what do you consider equipment and supplies?
We have a bunch of handouts that we do when we do different events, brochures, bracelets, frisbees.
A lot of, a lot of the giveaways are getting out, are given out at these special events to draw people in, like especially at the city's tent for the fair. We provide all of these small trinkets to get the families to come in, provide those to them, like the frisbees and the balls that the Crime Stoppers use. We have pencils, pens, the bracelets, ID bracelets. We also do
Badges.
The plastic badges for the little kids. We do the identity fingerprinting for the families. They take their current form and they, and their kids. In case that happens to them, those are just some of the examples.
So do you guys go around to the, the grade schools and talk to the, the little, you know, little ones and pass out stuff like that to them at all?
What Tim does in the grade schools, as she goes in and reads currently, he has a weekly location of the schools that he goes through and reads. He doesn't go in there and he can't get his things out solidly all the time. A lot of those things are given out at like special events that we do, but also when we do the tours at the PSD, we provide a little backpack with some of the police department for the kids when they go to school.
I know there's times when I do get to make it out to the different schools and read. I do take a lot of those giveaways because the kids, kids love them. If there's no other questions for community policing, I'll move on to page 14, K-9 program expenses. We started talking about this previously. We're looking at the projection of the same expenses that we had from previous years with the addition of a squad security drawer for one of our K-9 vehicles. This would be to house our patrol rifle for the K-9 officer. To this point, our K-9 officer who's equipped with a patrol rifle is, stores it in the back of his Dodge Durango, which isn't necessarily, keeps the, it's cased, but would potentially be visible if somebody were to get up close and look inside the cargo area of the vehicle. We think it would be prudent for us to equip it with a security gun safe, and that would allow the patrol officer to keep that rifle in that gun safe while he's on patrol. Any questions? If there's no questions, move on to 14, or correction, 15. Sex offender state dispersments. This is an expense that were mandated by legislature or state statute to, to send out anytime we take the $100 fee from a sex offender who registers with our department. That is primarily, that's paid by the sex offender and simply dispersed through the city according to statute. The city does receive a portion of that on behalf of the police department, who's required to use those funds for sex offender-related programs or equipment. Any questions?
Marcia.
So is this a one-time fee for these people, or do they have to, they have to register every year and pay the $100? They have to register every year and pay the $100?
They reg-
No. And then, do you have any idea about how many we have here in our small-town border here?
Yes, every time they have to register, which is annually, they have to pay the $100, or if they move into our community, they have to pay that initial registration fee as well. And we have roughly, it fluctuates depending on, but it's roughly 50. Schools, daycares, there's some other restrictions that I'd have to refer to the statute to recite, but yeah. School, yeah. Parks.
So we know who they are and we keep an eye on them?
Oh, absolutely. Sergeant Smaha is in charge of our sex offender registration, and he, in addition to their registering every year, he also does checks, registration checks for all of the sex offenders to make sure that their address is correct and all that other information that's required by statute to provide.
Yes, Alderman Snow.
Curiosity, is this a January renewal or is it May 1st fiscal for the city?
Nope, it's one year depending on when they initially registered. So it's dependent on the sex offender themselves. Any other questions on page 15? If not, move to page 16, office supplies. That went down primarily in the area of the $1,800, which was for Marco, which we just moved to contractual services, as well as office supplies, which again, we just took what our expenses were at six months, projected them out to 12 months, and that's what we came up with, which was a $2,800 cost savings. Any questions? Gas and oil, page 17. We took the projection, projection of how much, or how many gallons we were going to use, and then used a estimate of 250 a gallon, which seems to be within the ballpark of what it costs us per gallon, depending on the time of year and other factors, which got us to 112,500.
Yes, Marcia.
So typically, do we use about the same gallons every year, or do we find ourselves driving more or less, or is it pretty much the same every year?
It fluctuates from year to year. It just kind of depends. I mean, looking historically at the different years, since about 2016, you know, you've got a couple of years that are in the 70,000, and then you've got a couple of years that are in the 90s. So it just depends on, you know, how many new officers we have, and, you know, they, they tend to drive a little bit more and are on patrol more. It just kind of depends.
Alderman Snow.
Now, in the past, a lot of the guys would leave the cars running their whole shift, whether it was hot or cold, but I thought that was because of the computer issues and firing up. Didn't we resolve that issue, and could there be more shutdown time on the engines?
Yeah, we absolutely did. That's one of the things that Deputy Chief Wallace and I were working on over the last year. And yes, that, that's exactly why we left the, the cars running. Otherwise, prior to that, we had a policy that, you know, they needed to be shut off at certain times. That kind of went out the window when we were having computer issues, when the cars would shut off, it shut off our computers, which is problematic in an emergency situation. Deputy Chief Wallace and Officer Blankenship made arrangements through Tri-City to put timers in the vehicles that allow us to have the vehicles shut off, but it won't shut the computers and everything else down for two, three, sometimes four hours. So it allows us to shut the vehicles down and not have the issues arise from shutting the computers down.
So in theory, we might drop some of the fuel usage down with implementing that policy?
Yeah, it's possible. It's possible.
And then on a humorous note, when are we going to electric?
That's something we have to look into.
Be a little bit more expensive per squad, the state list doesn't have one yet. Like double.
Any other questions for page 17? Page 18, operating supplies. Primarily status quo with a couple of items such as car washes, which went down about 400 bucks. Details went down about 1,000. We did add weapon repair kits for our AR-15 rifles as well as the Glocks, which was brought to us through our patrol section, who identified that as a need with a cost estimate of approximately $1,000, which would provide us with all the supplies that our armorers would need in order to clean and maintain all of our firearms.
Alderman Freeman.
What are chemical munitions? Is that like tear gas?
Tear gas, OC, as well as all of our taser probes are included in that as well. You saw the significant increase of about $2,500. That's primarily for our taser probes that we're required to have in addition to our training taser probes. If there's no other questions. Page 19, miscellaneous expenses. Miscellaneous expenses actually went down. You'll notice our lunch meetings and food went down, and general supplies went down. Lunch meetings and food, you know, that's one of those expenses too, depending on retirements and things of that nature can kind of fluctuate. And we went off what our six-month cost analysis was and projected that out, so that's how we got that number. Any questions?
Alderman Freeman.
So the interpreter service, I'm assuming that we have multiple officers that speak Spanish, and that would be for more or less like if you were maybe interrogating a suspect or somebody in like a crime, right?
We have one officer that's fluent in Spanish. We have some that have working knowledge, but not to the point where they could actually go through and be able to testify in court. So what we have is we have a list of citizens who go through a testing process for city and county and that are fluent in Spanish. And then if we need somebody for like driving under the influence or domestic or an investigation that the detective section is doing, they'll go and utilize that list and see if there's an available interpreter.
And then those people are paid, because that's a, $1,000, that's a, that's a pretty low number.
Yeah. Yep, it is, and it's something that we've been able to, to use, and we haven't needed to go beyond that, as you can see, since the inception back in 18. Any other questions? Page 20, equipment. So a lot of the equipment we will, that we've purchased in the past, we will maintain either one of those pieces of equipment or something very similar, just in case we have issues or need to replace it. But, you know, otherwise, for example, like the investigations digital camera, you know, we've, last year we purchased two new ones. This year we have one and on the off-chance that we need to replace one, one goes down, something happens to it. Otherwise, you'll see in the patrol section, computer replacement, we will budget it 4,500 last year, and this year budgeted 1,100. We go primarily off of our IT recommendations. They keep track of all of our computers, how old they are, what updates they need, the end-of-life, and ultimately, when it comes time for budget, they make recommendations to us on what we're going to need for the following year as far as computer replacement. And for the patrol section, they indicated that we would And for the patrol section, they indicated that we would need one at the cost of $1,100. In addition to that, another expense, department issued firearm replacements, just kind of like I'd already stated, you know, we have some that if somebody's firearm malfunctions, we replace it with one that we have in storage and we need to have a couple of those on hand and we anticipate the potential for additional officers. So we may need to purchase new ones as people retire. Then squad car security drawers, as with our K-9 squad car, we identified a couple of detective cars that would also be in need of these squad security drawers, two of them at $1,750 with a total of $3,500 using the same rationale as we had with our K-9 squads. Otherwise, if you would look down at SWAT, night vision monocular, essentially that is a single monocular that allows our SWAT team to work in complete darkness and we identified this as a need this last year when our SWAT team got deployed on a standoff. The subject was outside, it was dark out and our SWAT team did not have the ability to see in the dark and we're essentially blind. This is something that we identified as a true necessity and we understand that there's a significant cost associated with that and keeping that in mind, you know, we don't anticipate getting everything all at once, but we did recognize that it is something we need and would like to work towards equipping all of our SWAT officers with this piece of equipment. But they are 3,500 for the monocular themselves and then almost $700 for the adapter. So it's costly, but it, you know, it's the difference between being able to see and not. It's, in my opinion, well worth it. And then again, for administration, computer replacements, IT identified that both of our deputy chiefs' computers have reached their end of life primarily because of the operating system. I know you've heard Attorney Drella explain that Windows is going to get to the point where they don't update certain operating systems. Both deputy chiefs' computers have gotten to that point as well. So we need, well, we're in a position where either we replace them or they're no longer going to get any security updates which exposes them to viruses.
Alderman Snow?
So on the monocular gear, what is the monocular adapter?
The monocular adapter is what allows the piece of equipment to attach to the helmet itself.
Alderman Freeman?
So these things that are crossed off the veridus, the barrier system, these are things we already have. I think we got a veridus with a donation. I know we just authorized you guys to get the barrier system not too long ago. So we already have these bipods and this weather and ballistic meter as well?
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? I'd like to just point out that overall, we're, we came in $3,050 less than what we had budgeted for last year. And if I can have everybody turn to five-year capital expense. For this next year, the police department would be requesting to replace four Durangos which include three sergeant vehicles and one of our Canines with a total estimated cost of $185,000. Take questions on that? I'll move down to equipment, traffic control devices. I don't know if anybody remembers me explaining these last year. They're called bollards. Essentially, they're the posts that stick up like you'll see in front of the entrances to buildings or, and it keeps vehicles from being able to crash through into security area, secured areas. And this last year, we spent $12,000 to place, and we're still in the process of placing several of them throughout Belvidere that are removable so we can put them in sidewalks and areas that we could anticipate being security risks and to keep people from driving up on sidewalks, things that we've seen not only nationally but worldwide. If people want to cause problems at events or parades, things of that nature, we're just trying to anticipate and prevent problems from happening. In addition to that, with the expansion of Buchanan Street Strolls, we're looking to expand those bollards because that was not an event we had anticipated for. So we would need additional bollards to accommodate that as well. Any questions? And then infrastructure needs. Our patrol division, our patrol office downstairs in the basement of the public safety building has been, it's been 25 years since anything's been done to it. And I know the council had just approved a grant to replace or to provide us with a cabinet as well as some other storage needs that we had identified. But in that process, we identified several other areas within the patrol section itself that are in serious, in need of serious revamping to accommodate all of the additional officers and, you know, equipment that we have. And in talking with Deputy Chief Wallace and Gardner, it would take approximately $10,000 to start to address some of those needs which would include doing some reconfiguring of the workstations, adding workstations, things of that nature. If need be, Deputy Chief Wallace can provide some more details if you have any questions on that.
Alderman Freeman?
Is that an area of the public safety building that you share with the sheriff's department or is that just for our officers?
Yeah, that's just for our officers. And my understanding is when we originally built that area of the patrol section, and correct me if I'm wrong, that was something that the police department had funded. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Deputy Chief? Anybody need to take a five-minute break before we get into the next one because it's probably going to be another hour sitting down. So anybody want to take a break? All right, let's take five minutes.
One hour, but, or try an hour and a half.
No, hour.
You liked the first one? I think about an hour and a half.
No, they were, they were fast.
Do you have copies for me, Al? Whatever you're handing out? Did you already hand them out?
Not yet, I'm saying, wait until we got ready.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Mission statement for Belvidere Fire Department. Our main purpose of our fire department is to provide the citizens of Belvidere and Boone County with a professional fire rescue and EMS service. We are dedicated to the saving of lives, to protection of property and to prevention of fire. We will strive to maintain a high standard of professionalism through continuing education and training of all of our members. Belvidere Fire Department at a glance. We have one chief, one administrative assistant, three captains, three lieutenants and 22 firefighter paramedics. Notables from last year. Lieutenant Wilcox retired after 30 years in September 2019 and Jason Swanson was promoted to lieutenant to take his position. We hired one firefighter in fiscal 2020, a local, local young man named Jake Hendrickson. We had numerous training and education accomplishments last year. I will provide that to anyone who is interested in seeing it. There's a lot to go through and I will make sure that if you're, if you request it, you will get it. All right? 2019, 2020, equipment and building improvements. We replaced our 15-year-old expired MSA air packs with new MSA G1 air packs. And we also put into service our new Zoll cardiac monitors. We purchased a new complete set of dive equipment, given us two complete sets and a spare on our department. And also, station number one, the apparatus doors received a facelift and new garage doors were installed with windows that all line up across. Thank you, council, for the above-mentioned items. And I forgot something notable as well, four portable radios were purchased as well as one mobile radio. So thank you, everybody here for the above-mentioned items that were purchased. 2020, 21 objectives for us is to continue our education for our firefighters and our officers. We also want to continue to implement and improve our standard operating procedures to ensure a standard response to incidents that is efficient, ensures worker safety and reduces liability. We also will continue to upgrade and maintain our equipment and our buildings. All this will help us continue to provide excellent service that exceeds expectations. Page number one of 20. Is there any questions on this first page? Most of this can be addressed later on as we get to the pages. Do we have any, any questions pertaining to page number one? Page number two is salaries. Here's where I have included two new initiatives. I'm requesting that we hire two new firefighters to bring each shift up to 10. I have placed a information sheet in front of everyone. It's titled 10-man shifts. If you'd like, I'd like to read that to you now. 10-man shifts. Present response model. Our fire department is presently staffed with three shifts at 10, 9, and 9 respectively. We operate on a contractually based seven-man minimum staffing 24 hours a day, seven days a week and 365 days a year. The department contractually provides for two personnel, two personnel off on a vacation or Kelly day per shift. During the past four years, approximately 80% of our days are manned at seven firefighters per day which only allows us to have two staffed apparatus attempting to meet our citizens' needs. What a 10-man shift will provide us is the flexibility to operate in the proposed response model that I've, in number two below. Also, when the occasional or long-term sickness or injury occurs, it would not cause overtime. Also, when the occasional or long-term sickness or injury occurs, it would not cause overtime, because we would already have met our minimum staffing obligation. Furthermore, as a department that values education, we will have the ability to send an officer or firefighter on a forty-hour work week to, to class without the burden of calling in a replacement on overtime. And on the rare day where we would be at a seven-man shift, we would operate and respond out of engine one oh one and one oh two, and eventually BTAC two, which also everyone in here probably knows as Mini Pumper. Number two, our proposed response model. Station number one will house the shift commander in his command vehicle, as well as engine one oh one with a three-man crew. The three-man engine will be the most manned vehicle in our day-to-day operations due to the fact it is centrally located in the downtown area, and is the most versatile and best-equipped apparatus in the fleet. Station number two will house the shift lieutenant, or the acting lieutenant, who will be on engine one oh two, or ladder one fifty, with his driver paramedic. And then squad one forty-two, or, when it gets here, BTAC two, will be manned by a driver paramedic and a firefighter paramedic. The BTAC will be the first to respond to medical, medical calls in the station-two response area. Increasingly, we are being challenged with back-to-back calls for service. For example, a call comes in for a medical emergency, and within minutes, another call for service comes in. Each of our calls average forty-five minutes. To, uh, each of our calls averages forty-five minutes to mitigate. Please, uh, see the, the sheet I have placed in front of you? Three calls in one hour. As you can see, this is becoming, uh, more and more frequent. Um, down, the last year, uh, was down a hundred and sixty-six, but this is something that it is, um, happening to us quite often. Um, the ability to handle these situations can be accomplished with ten-man shifts, where we can have three apparatus crews to respond to calls versus just having two apparatus crews providing emergency service. So, in sixteen, we had a hundred and fifty-nine times where this took place. Seventeen, one seventy-nine. In twenty-eighteen, a hundred and eighty-six. In twenty-nineteen, we had a hundred and sixty-six. Uh, we've also, I, I know by, since January one, we've had a number of them already this, this year. One of the things that, that concerns me about this is, when someone calls nine-one-one, they expect to have somebody responding, all right? Um, the way we're presently operating, the possibility of that occurring, uh, well, right here, a hundred and sixty-six times last year alone, we're probably, we probably made, we answered the call, was going to come that time when we don't. And I don't want to get to that point. Number three in the back page, overtime. In the, in the past four years, we paid out over two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars in overtime for sick leave and shift coverage for understaffing, which could be virtually eliminated. This comes out to sixty-four thousand dollars per year of overtime savings, which could be used to help cover one of the new candidates' salary benefits. Please see the five-year overtime comparison. In twenty-sixteen, as you can see, we had, uh, a two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars in overtime. In seventeen, two-hundred thousand. Then eighteen, a hundred and thirty-six thousand. In twenty-nineteen, one-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. And then this year, we are presently at ninety-three thousand, with three months to go. A lot of these expenses, in, in my, in my idea here, could be overcome by having ten-man shifts. Not listed on your ten-man shift paper you have in front of you, but very important is the ability for officers at station number two to work on areas of responsibility, such as operation guidelines, um, the ability to seek grants that are out there, and that we're probably just missing out on. Some of that grant money could offset some of our, this new proposal for, for additional personnel. Number five, incidents. The ability to have eight personnel on scene for labor-intensive incidents, such as fire, motor vehicle accidents, hazardous materials, mutual aid calls, and natural gas leaks, can be met with efficiency, and above all, can be met with safety. Six, inspections. Additional personnel will allow for inspectors to handle inspection inquiries and unscheduled contractor tests while on duty. It is another way to minimize overtime expenditures while con- continuing to provide good service to present as well as potential business owners. Seven, twelve years ago, in two thousand and eight, the department was staffed at eleven, ten, and ten, when we responded to roughly two thousand and five hundred calls for service per year. Today, with less personnel, we are answering over thirty-one hundred calls per year for emergency services. In addition to thousands of hours of training, daily maintenance, and inspections, we are also responding to our citizens' ever-growing needs for public education, as well as our numerous public relation requests. In my twenty-five years, our department has never been busier. This is not your father's fire department. This is a department that has evolved, and if you ask our citizens, they, they recognize it as well. We are involved, and we are well-invested in our community. Number eight, comparison survey. It's also included in here, if you look, would I hand it out? In a survey of local fire agencies, both paid and volunteer, the city of Belvidere Fire Department sits at the lowest of all in firefighters per one thousand population at one-point-one-zero. To put this in perspective, the city of Sycamore, with thirty-six firefighters and a population of twenty thousand, has one-point-eight firefighters per one thousand population. A reminder that last year, I sought an, an assistant chief, uh, position. And it passed to the extent where we are going to pay the last quarter for a new firefighter hire. I have, uh, since switched my thoughts, feeling that additional manpower will benefit our citizens more. I will field any questions, ten-man shift.
So, if, do you, do you think that when you do the ten-man shift, that you're going to cut out overtime, or you're still going to have overtime?
There will still be, uh, over, overtime. Yeah. There'll still be there. It's, it's something that we just can't get, you just can't get by. It's going to happen. But the basi- biggest expense for us typically is the long-term, or the, uh, long-term illness or injury, where I think, uh, last year, it comprised roughly one-hundred thousand dollars.
And what will this do to the pension?
I'll pass that along to, uh, Captain Shado, who is a pension expert.
Thank you, chief. Alderman Frank, uh, your first question about the overtime, so we're just, we're estimating like a forty-eight thousand dollar reduction is what Becky came up with, um, by hiring the two. Uh, over the past years, again, it's a variable expense, so it's, on average, been about sixty-four thousand dollars a year that it would possibly save. Um, as far as the pension, uh, new employees, the nice thing about them is they are tier-two, so their, uh, benefits cost about as much, some studies say, around what, uh, it would be if you had to pay social security for them, so it's a less expense. And, uh, the largest part of the pension concern has to do with the unfunded liability, and that is due to, um, those are expenses for workers who have already put in, uh, years of service, that, the contributions haven't met the requirements for that. So, as far as starting fresh with a brand-new employee, um, you would just consider it like a, a new employee, and wouldn't it be, uh, and wouldn't it be a further strain, other than the normal costs of a pension for our plan? The normal cost, uh, the actuaries say we're under four hundred thousand for the department, and if you know, our contribution is over a million, so the normal cost is, um, not the problem, so that's how that would affect the pension.
Okay, one more question. So, if you hire two at the lower tier, do you move up more people that would have to pay more pension?
No, that's a good question. So, once you're, anyone, I think, hired later than twenty-twelve is tier-two. So, as tier-one pensioners retire, and there's more and more tier-two pensioners, the, um, normal cost of that pension, uh, will go down. So, they don't change. Once, once you're tier-two, you're, uh, will be that for your career.
So, I have to say that, that this is something that I, I can support, um, Chief Heiser, um, being how we're ten, nine, and nine, um, respectively, and you want to go to a ten-man thing. Our, our citizens rely on our fire department when they call nine-one-one. As you said, eighty percent of the calls are medically related. And the longer people live, that's not going to go down. Um, our population is aging, and, um, we, you know, when you call nine-one-one, you get the police department, but they're not paramedics, and they're not staffed to be paramedics, and, um, I would hate to get to a point that you're calling nine-one-one, and you have to be on, on a wait list, because we've already got two other calls out, and, um, we can't get to that, that third house during that period of time.
Thank you. If I, I'd like to add something to that. Uh, right now, uh, we have a firefighter, Stefan Mead, uh, who's in paramedic school, and we expect him to be coming out. That'll give us twenty-three paramedics on the fire department. Um, there's not many places that you can go, uh, especially in our area, where you're going to have five paramedics show up at your door anytime you call for a, a medical emergency. That being said, um, thank you for your support.
Okay, um, with this cost for the ten-man, did you consider the training that goes along with it? With the, with the new men that's included in here?
Do you want to cover that one, or basically it's going to be basic firefighter?
That should be included in the training budget. It would be an increase of, uh, what was the last Rockford Academy chief around? Three thousand dollars?
Well, three grand, yeah, three grand.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, i- if you look at this year's budget, though, uh, for training, as of how far, how we are, we are, we would be able to absorb that without increasing our budget.
So, three thousand per man?
Yes, ma'am.
The other thing that, that really jumps out at me is, um, the fact that we are so low, um, in comparison. I, I like to compare Belvidere to Woodstock a lot, because our population is almost identical. Our, um, our, um, per capita household income is almost identical. And the fact, you know, that they have fifty-three firefighters to our twenty-eight, um, they have t- over two firefighters for every thousand people, and we barely have one. Um, I think that we need to get with the program. I think we have a, a world-class fire department, but I think adding to it is only going to benefit our citizens.
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, page three. Here we, uh, have overtime. As I, I placing everybody in front of you, uh, everyone has it, the amount of overtime that we have spent up to this point, as I had mentioned, with, uh, three months to go, uh, we're trending, uh, uh, relative, I think we'd probably be in between the twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen years, so. And again, with ten-man, I think that we could alleviate some of those pressures as well from overtime. Any questions on overtime?
So, our overtime, um, did drop for the last three years, except for, um, last, except for nineteen. Um, Al, the, the training and the inspections and the investigations, um, that's all, that is all overtime paid, as well as, I, I get that the shift coverage is overtime, but, um, I didn't realize that, you know, the, that training is all paid as overtime?
Um, only when we have, uh, people off-duty, when they have to come in, or we're sent them to a class, that's, that's when we have to pay them overtime. That's correct.
I, I just thought, you know, that, um, both, you know, nineteen, twenty, and now for twenty-one, um, fifty-four thousand dollars is a lot in overtime for, you know, training and inspections and in investigations.
Uh, Ms. Freeman, so anytime, part of that is anytime anybody's off for training, it's usually out of town, like a forty-hour weekend, and as of right now, we have to backfill those positions to cover the manning, so that, that the training cost, it, it is a training cost, but it's not to pay those guys, it's usually to, uh, cover them, because they're, they're not on duty. Um, also, the largest training cost we have is when someone needs to become a paramedic. So, I'm, uh, Captain Burdick is the EMS coordinator, he could give you exact figures, but, um, just off of the top of my head, I think they need like five hundred clinical hours in the ER, and that's just one, one part of it. Um, the ride time, they need, uh, to get a letter signed off by a preceptor, and so what that entails is they literally have to meet all these criteria and run these certain types of calls, and then do them enough that the preceptor feels like they're proficient. So, what the guys will do is, um, on their day-after shift, they'll work and, um, ride with Lifeline Ambulance, that's who they do that with, and so that's all an overtime cost. And then, um, while they're actually in school, if it falls on a shift day, then to maintain our seven-man minimum, we have to hire back to cover that. So, any, anytime that we're hiring back, though, those are the costs that the, uh, extra manpower would alleviate, unless you had a higher back and an injury and a sick, you know, things, things like that.
To also add to that, uh, we have, uh, our inspectors come back. We have, uh, now we'll have four inspectors, and they come in under days off and do the inspections that we need to get done, so that's also part of that expense. Uh, moving to fire pension. Got anything to say, Becky?
Yep, fire pension, uh, your total for the year is, uh, one million, one fifty-four, nine fifty, and, um, a portion of that comes out of the replacement tax.
Any questions in that area? Uh, moving to page five of twenty, health insurance. You ready? Okay. And there's dental insurance, page six. And where are we at? Page, uh, uniform allowance, okay, page, uh, seven. Um, let's see, three, two. Everything's relatively the same here, in, it will be expensive, uh, we're able to bring on a couple firefighters. Uh, we have to clothe them, of course, the uniformal. Pretty much everything else is kind of status quo here. Any questions in the uniform allowance, line fifty-one, forty? Cash? We're frugal. Page eight. Page eight, fifty-one, fifty-two, training. Uh, here's where some of the, uh, if, if anyone had any questions, I do have, uh, I brought along with me tonight, Captain Shado, who is also our training coordinator, and pension guy and IT guy. Anything else? Just, yes. Any questions relating to training? Okay, moving on to page nine of twenty, repair, maintenance of buildings. As you can see, uh, we've, we're still at the same amount of money that we're requesting. As you can see, we've, we're still at the same amount of money that we're requesting. But there's something I still need to get done, and that would be the top one, windows sills at fire station number one. They're getting to the point where we have to do something with them, and I've talked to a local contractor, and he's in agreement with that. That's why I continue to bring that back. At some point, we're hoping to get that taken care of. So Station One, the exterior, the brick, will be all completed. Keep in mind, we have a building that we're dealing with that is well over a hundred years old, and maintenance has to be done, of course. Any other questions in repair, maintenance of buildings? Yes, sir?
So is, is all or most, most of these repairs, I take it, for Station One downtown, since the one on Sixth Street is pretty much newer, you don't need to do any repairs on that at all?
Yes, most of it is for, the big, the bigger expenditures would be for Station One. It needs more. One thing, though, that we do have going over at Station Two is we're remodeling the bathroom there. Keep in mind, that building is getting old. It's approaching fifty, I believe. And surprising, but yes, it is. And we'll be, we'll have, do some work there as well. Yes.
So I had another, I had, you know, you're looking to hire two firefighters. I have a cousin who's married to a firefighter, and she is amazing. If you were to ever hire a female firefighter, would that entail, you know, having to revamp the fire stations for a whole separate quarter? Have you ever considered female firefighters? Have any ever applied?
Yes, there are a few females that are on our list. One's relatively high on the list. We had one, we had a female back in the mid-two thousands, or twenty, or what was it, twenty, two thousand five? Two thousand five. At that time, I believe we could got away with just regular quarters. We put a, I do not enter on the bathroom, have both bathrooms. Other than that, I think today, we'd probably have to do some revamping and maybe even their own little partition so that they can be in the bedroom without other males around. So, okay? Can I answer your question? Page ten, ten of twenty here, repair, maintenance of equipment. Do we have any questions in this line item sixty, twenty? No questions. Page eleven, line item sixty, thirty, repairs, maintenance vehicles. This is pretty much, has, we're holding a course. Keep in mind, as I've said numerous occasions, that we do have aging, an aging fleet. We're slowly remedying that. As you can see over in the left-hand column, middle of the page, the, we have a 2011 Lexus, we got a 2013 Zodiac boat, we got a 2016 Ford F-350 utility truck, 2017 Ford Expedition, we have a Polaris Ranger, and an Lexus engine, soon to be followed by a mini pumper, or what I like to call BTAC two. So that'll be coming soon. But we still, look down there, we have a 1992 Sutven, an engine that's in reserve at Station Two. We also are still operating a 2002 American Le France, Engine 102. So Engine, Engine 102 is, comes at a cost. It's eighteen years old, and we are experiencing difficulties keeping it on the road. American Le France went out of business. So each and every time that it has troubles, it's extremely difficult to find parts for it. So therefore, I want to keep the money in the budget at fifty-five thousand, slight increase. I have any questions for that?
So in your, your capital plan, you're looking for a new command vehicle? Are you looking to replace one of these command vehicles, or like the 2005 Tahoe, is that the one you're looking to get rid of? Or are you just needing a third command vehicle?
No, we're looking to eventually retire the 2005 Chevy Tahoe with one hundred and fourteen thousand miles on it. And also, one more thing about that, that a lot of people don't know, it's, it's a two-wheel drive, and we need to have a four-wheel drive, especially in that capacity. I ask my officers to go out there on, you know, slick days, snowy days, and they're going out there with a vehicle that should not be operated in those kind of conditions.
And your command vehicles, they stay at the station, like you don't, you don't drive yours home, do you, Al?
I drive mine home, yes. Yes. Twenty-seventeen Ford Expedition, that goes home with me. Yep. Yeah, typically, when we're operating like ladder one-fifty, for instance, it's got ten tires to it, on it, okay? And we could spend anywhere up to thirteen thousand dollars. We just, we just replace some for ladder one-fifty, so therefore, I've only requested ten grand this year. But we spend a lot of money on tires, especially when we're running a lot of, a lot of emergency calls. Page twelve of twenty, line item sixty-two-hundred, telephone utilities. Any questions relating to this page? Page thirteen, line item sixty-eight-ten, physicals. It's a contracted, it's a contractual obligation. Each of our guys get physicals mandated every year. And all the things that you see listed there are also tested as well. Questions on that? Page fourteen, line item sixty-eight-twenty-two, fire prevention and education. That is a position that we have, a responsibility we've given to Lieutenant Cunningham, who's done a really terrific job. Is there any questions relating to what probably is the most important thing that we do in a non-emergency function? Fire prevention. Yep. Is that a question?
So I know, I know you guys do a lot of community stuff. I know you, I know you guys read to the kids as well, and you have your fire department open house. Now, the police department budgets seven thousand dollars for trinkets and this and that. I don't, I don't see anywhere in here where you, where you budget for that type of thing, but I know you guys have that stuff.
Yeah, it, it's in there. I'd like to include in miscellaneous. It's, we get like pen, we do a lot of different things that our brothers in the, in the police service do as well. We have a lot of things that we do. So, but it's, it's part of this here, Alderman Freeman, two thousand dollars miscellaneous.
Just out of curiosity, what's the big jump in CPR cards and supplies? I got a good idea what it is, but I'm sure everyone else would like to hear.
I'm gonna try and help you out with that. We, it's costing a lot more money to, to have people certify CPR, and the cards are getting quite expensive. Firefighter Beck is a paramedic on our department. He operates this particular area. It's extremely beneficial for us. We get a lot of interaction with our local citizens. But the cards are going, they are going up, yes. At some point, we'll have to raise our, our fees as well. However, I don't have the figure with me right now, and I meant to grab it today because I knew somebody was going to ask me about this. We're still making money on this to go back into the general, so, okay? Can I answer your question? We're, yeah, we're doing quite a bit. And again, I'll have it next week for you, okay? All right. Anything you want to add, Dirk?
I was just going to answer Ms. Freeman's question about the handouts. And we do have two costs for those that are budgeted on there. One's twenty-five-hundred, and one's five hundred for printing. The largest part of that is our no second grade left behind class, where we put together information for our second graders that we go through all the schools in District 100, and we give those. So that's where those are covered.
Any other questions in fire prevention, education? Next, moving to line item sixty-eight-two-four, emergency medical services. Captain Burdick is in charge of our medical EMS. He's, he's our coordinator, does a terrific job, keeps everything streamlined, keeps everybody's license renewed, and just does an all-in-all terrific job. Is there any questions in the medical sixty-eight-twenty-four? Okay, moving on to line item seventy-twenty, sixteen, page sixteen of twenty here, office supplies. Is there any questions in this area? There has been some movement, and I would attempt to answer any of your questions pertaining to that movement. However, I have the IT guy with me, and he probably can answer them better than I.
So you guys don't need any new tablets, like every, every other department seems to need? And then you have this Target Solution membership, which is, it says new this year?
Yes.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
Your first question, we just moved the computer tablet updates and replacements to a different line item that matched it better. So we, we do have those. What usually, if you guys remember, we just updated our computer network and server not too long ago, so our expenses have gone way, way down for that now, because everything is in perfect working order. Sometimes the iPads, which are on all our response vehicles, those are what we use the tablets for. They have all the mapping, all the call information. We receive that from dispatch. And what happens with those, since they're plugged in all the time, the batteries just stop working eventually. So there is a little bit of money that we budget to anticipate and cover that. Your second question, this will be our second year for Target Solutions. What Target Solutions is, is a database for our training. All of our training has to be documented for many reasons, state requirements, liability purposes. And so that's our software that is able to track all that. And then also, it has some delivery of, has some online courses that we use as well.
So, yeah, I think, I think we just talked about that not too long ago at council. And then under that, your search engines down here, these are all just different ones that you use for different things?
Yes, so Google is our G-suite, our email. So that's what we have chosen to use, our email. We also use a lot of the forums and the documents and sharing capabilities of the Google. We use the calendar. That's how we do all our scheduling and scheduling our training and everything like that. So I believe it's around five dollars per user per month. So that's the Google. Active 911 is the software that's on our tablets that displays our calls. Microsoft, that's for Microsoft Office and Excel. Adobe, that's for PDFs. And then Viper is our antivirus.
Thanks. Let's see. Line item seventy-thirty, gas and oil. Again, we pretty much, we figured twenty thousand dollars a year. You never know when oil prices go up. As you can see, it pretty much holds true. We've had some good years and some bad years. Most notably, you look in, back in fiscal year thirteen, we were up to twenty-three, or I'm sorry, fourteen, we're up to twenty-four thousand dollars. We've been down as low as fourteen thousand dollars in fiscal year seventeen. This year, we're, we're trending just to be probably identical with last year's total of nineteen thousand. Any questions pertaining to gas and oil? Okay. Moving to line item seventy-forty, operating supplies. You'll notice an increase, a request for an additional two thousand dollars in this item. Typically, we're running low on it each year. We're, we go over the budget, sometimes barely, however, it's enough to where it, I don't, it doesn't stand well with me. So we're going to ask for ten thousand and continue to do the job we do. Any questions in this line item seventy-forty? Line item seventy-nine-hundred, miscellaneous expenses. I usually budget a thousand dollars for this each year. This is typically for our ceremonies, maybe our Mavis, when we, when we invite Mavis agencies in our, in our Mavis Division Eight to come to our place, we host them. So that's money that this would, I would come out of this line item seventy-nine-hundred. Any questions on this miscellaneous expenses? Okay, moving to line item eighty-two-hundred, equipment. Again, this year, I'm requesting twenty-five thousand dollars. Couple differences this year. You'll notice that I'm requesting more in the two percent fund, shared equipment cost. Typically, the two percent committee will allow me, they'll match what I, what I get. So therefore, this would be a twenty thousand dollar possibility for us to gather more equipment that's needed. Fire hose replacement, we purchased some fire hose already this past year. We're a little bit low on it, on a certain couple of different sizes, and we went and purchased that. We're doing really well. However, all it would take is for someone to run over some of our fire hose at an incident, and we'd be spending this money right here, twenty-five hundred dollars. Tactical medical equipment, this is a area that we've gotten into the last four, five, six years, I believe. I'm not really totally sure when we started it. However, we're well-equipped, and we are training with our, our local police department, and we're allowing, we're having paramedics that who can go in, hopefully it never happens here, but we're ready for it if it does. So, thank you. Any questions on line item eighty-two-hundred, equipment? Okay, moving to five-year capital expenses. As you can see, the, the big-ticket item there is to finish the mini pumper that we've started with. You guys okaying my purchase of a Ford F-550, and now it needs to have a rescue box placed on the back of it, okay? Also, we had mentioned already, we talked about the shift commander vehicle. Ours is getting a lot of age on it. It's got one hundred and fourteen thousand miles on a 2005 Chevy Tahoe, two-wheel drive. It's got 114,000 miles on a 2005 Chevy Tahoe, two-wheel drive. And also, this year, we'll be making payment number five of seven payments for our fire engine, Engine 101, the engine that's placed downtown, our newest vehicle. And then I wanted to point out, too, in vehicles, at some point, the city council here will have to, with the help of the fire department, decide on a possibility of a fire engine. It's down the road a little bit, but something to keep in mind. At this time, we have a 2018, we have a 2002, and a 1992. The 92 and the 2002, by this time in 2024, will probably, probably should not be on the road. Moving to equipment, battery-operated extrication equipment. A lot of members of the council were here two years ago when we did a demonstration outside with battery-operated extrication equipment. It's something that we have on our new Engine 101 downtown. Presently, on Engine 102 at Station 2 is a, is equipment that is probably 20 to 25 years old. We can't really tell because we don't have the records. We are submitting an Office of the State Fire Marshal small equipment grant. I'm hoping that that will come through. It's a grant that's the Illinois Fire Marshal has out there. I believe it to be in excess of $5 million for small equipment. So the hopes are that we can attain that. So that'll, that'll take away this, that'll take away this expenditure of $17,500. Moving down to infrastructure needs. I want to renumber these here. Sorry, Becky. Number one should be Station 1 roof restoration on our, on our fire station downtown. When we have snow like we had just recently over the weekend, we're getting, it's leaking inside of our side with the guys are on, the personnel side. So this is coming sooner than what I anticipated. I'm going to have to start seeking some bids to have this taken care of. Number two is Station 1 admin side remodel. Some people have seen that remodeling taking place. The guys are doing a lot of it. Lieutenant Laterno and firefighter Draw are instrumental in getting this thing going. We're talking about a building, again, that's well over 100 years old. The administration side hasn't been touched since probably the 1940s. So we are redoing that. We're redoing the officers' quarters. They'll now have a quarters like a lot of other fire stations and fire departments have for their people, as well as we'll have an inspection office for our inspection coordinator and history inspectors. And we'll be, also, the inspection area is also going to be revamped as well, so. And then, number three would be the Station 2 apparatus floor refinishing. It's starting to crack around the grates, and it's in need of repair. However, like I said, Station 1 roof restoration is definitely in greater need. Yes.
How old is the roof on that station? It's got to be old as hell.
It, I'd have to, I'd have to find the records. But I can tell you this, and some people might remember this, but there was a fellow who did it. He was a roofer from Rockford. He was called the Chicken, the guy that did the, he was the Chicken Man in a series that was going on. So, anyone remember that?
Big Brother?
Could have been, yeah, Big Brother, yeah. He was on Big Brother. So anyway, it's been a long time. I'm guessing 25 years, probably? So, look it up. I'm not, I'm not making this up.
[laughter]
Somebody please look it up. Okay. Anyway, answer your question? About 25 years.
Okay, so I have a few things on this page. The mini pumper payment two is, how many payments do we have on that? Is it just the two payments, right? So that'll be paid off?
Yeah.
Okay. Then, our, our new fire engine, you're saying, if I heard you correctly, that by 2024, when this one is paid off, we're going to need another one. So we're basically going to have another, like, rotating another seven years of, yeah, $100,000 payments again. And then, I would think that the remodeling at Station 1, being how the building is so old, if it's not just for aesthetic or just for need to move walls for space, that most of the stuff in there, electrical, at least electric-wise, is not up to code.
I'll start with the first one. The fire engine, yeah. A lot of times, when you, you know, not that this city doesn't think ahead, okay, but in fire apparatus, we should be thinking ahead seven to 10 years on getting the next engine ready to go. This is why we're running into the situation we are now with the 2002 American La France, well beyond its time, and not to mention the 1992, which is nearing antique status. So by doing this here, we can start looking into the future. These are the major expenses that come equipment-wise, and we should do a better job of being ready and working towards that. That goal would be to keep fresh, fresh apparatus on the roads. Okay?
So typically, how, how long would, how long is this, this fire engine that we're paying off now? Is that good for 21 years? So we could get two more before this one needs to go and be replaced? And like, so it's pretty much going to always be an ongoing expense, right?
Not necessarily, all right? The, the one that we presently have, the Lexus Engine 101, it's an 18 right now. It should last us 15 years, but we need to have a recycling process. So Engine 101 would go over to Station 2, another one would come in. I would say you should be able to get at least 15 years out of these. I don't believe it'll be, you're going to have some reprieve. There'll be years where you have reprieve of not having to pay, you know, like $100,000, like you said, per year on a lease payment. But it's something that's not been done, and therefore, now we're going to be paying the price for it, so.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Our thought process was similar to how the police department is set on a rolling schedule. We anticipate every year, you know, God willing, that the budget allows us to, for them to rotate out their vehicles. So we thought this was the best option going forward with the police department because their vehicles are so expensive that doing the lease to own, obviously, was the best way to keep our costs down, but yet to keep the equipment moving.
Mayor, if I might? Just, just keep in mind, I'm always available downtown station. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them. All right? Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Back in December, six of us had given you our opinion on who we wanted for an alderman. And it wasn't Daniel. Because I think we need somebody that'll actually read the material and look at it and go through it and ask questions. I remember him from being on the alderman, and he never asked any questions whatsoever. He just basically voted how he was told to vote, so.
Yeah, I don't believe that. Actually, I want to commend you, Mayor, for picking somebody that has skin in the game, that wanted to be an alderman, that ran for an alderman twice. I think he did his due diligence there. I remember him also, he's the only alderman that ever went to Sister Cities with the mayor. And I think he really cared about it, and I think he deserves another chance at it.
Just one question for Attorney Drell. I was just wondering if there's any conflict, conflict of interest to you because he's chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission? And if so, would he have to resign from that to be an alderman?
If he were actually confirmed at a council meeting at that point when he's sworn in, he would only lose his chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission to only be an alderman. Anybody else? Hearing none. All those in favor, approval. Signified by saying aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. This is approved, and will be forwarded to City Council for final approval. Under B, we have resolution changing the appointment of the IMRF Authorized Agent since Sean Arco retired. It naturally becomes the duty of Sarah, so I need a motion to approve, just changing. Motion by Alman Snow, second by Alman Porter. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sounds unanimous to me. Under item C, a resolution authorizing the execution of a letter of credit with Midland State's Bank guaranteeing payment to Philadelphia Insurance Company. This is an annual insurance payment for our underground tanks. It's required under the state fire marshal laws. May have a motion to approve. I have a motion for Alman Snow.
I'll second it.
Second by Alman Crawford. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Again, it sounds unanimous. Under other, Alman Frank had asked for a discussion on local nuisance ordinances. I know she had an extended phone call with this city attorney. So would you like to present what you wanted to discuss?
Sure, thank you. Actually, I was told it's not actually a nuisance ordinance. I just wanted to bring up a phone call that I got. It was from a girl that works at, next door at the, at the bar. She's a bartender. Well, anyway, she got a ticket for parking in front of her house for 24 hours, and I just thought that was sort of crazy. But I guess it's been on the books for quite a while. And my issue is that we have so many cars that park in the grass. We have people that have flat tires in their driveway. Cars are parked like too deep, too wide, and she can't even park in front of her yard, or her house. So I was just wondering if other aldermen had any issues with ordinances that maybe needed to be up to date with the times?
Where does she live?
She lives on Warren and Locas.
This was, this has been an ordinance in effect for a long time, and this was talked about many years ago again. And the idea was, we had people parking trucks and tradesmen parking their trucks and their equipment on the street, and people parking in our city parking lots and leaving their vehicles for extended periods of time. And so that's my understanding of how that came into effect. There is, any ordinance in the city code can be brought up for review, can be rewritten, can be expunged. It's all up to what you want to do. I would suggest that if we are going to go that route with a specific ordinance, that whoever's making the proposal would get an exact copy of the ordinance and submit it for review. And I would suggest that it would probably be a good idea to talk to the city attorney previously because he'll have more background on why that ordinance was in effect and how long it's been in effect. Yes, Alman Crawford?
Yeah, I didn't really hear you. Was she parking her car in front of her?
Yeah, it's her own car. She has a son that's in high school, so sometimes they have to jackie their cars, like, you know, if he goes to school. But she works sometimes nights next door, and she got a ticket for parking in front of her house for 24 hours. And she said, "How do they not know that I worked that shift or I went to Walmart? So how do they not know that I moved my car?"
I never, I never heard of that before, anybody ever getting a ticket for parking overnight with a car.
Was it a snow ticket?
No. She got a $25 ticket for parking in front of her house for 24 hours. And she had to pay it last Friday.
Well, I think we can review that ticket and find out why the ticket was written first. Yes?
My experience with those types of citations, generally, they're complaint-driven, and typically, we'll respond to whoever's making the complaint, will mark the tires, and yeah, if they're parked there for, in the same spot for over 24 hours without movement, they can be cited. However, we'll typically try and make contact with the registered owner and get compliance before we write a citation. But it's possible that if they're there over 24 hours and we have, you know, proof of that, citation could be issued.
Well, my whole problem is, it's her house. That's, I just can't believe she can't park in front of her house for 24-hour period. That's what I don't understand.
Yeah, I understand that's the exception that you're taking. I'm just, you know, trying to explain, you know, the approach we've taken in the past. But ultimately, the ordinance dictates what we can and can't do.
The city attorney has a comment?
Just by way of history, the ordinance predates 1982 because that's the year in which our ordinances were codified into our current system. So it predates 1982, was amended in June of 98. I have no idea what that amendment was for because obviously predates everybody in this room, I believe, except for maybe Chief Heiser and Brent. And then the most recent amendment was in March of 2018, and that's the point where we amended that section to require towed vehicles to actually be connected to the towing vehicle. That was something that Alman Sanderson brought forward. But the 24-hour parking requirement or limit, looks like it predates 1982.
Yes, Alman Freeman?
So I think that's something that needs to be looked at. I mean, we can, we can make it so like you cannot park your work truck or, you know, service vehicle or whatever, but if it's your own house and you have current registration, then there shouldn't be anything wrong with that as long as the vehicle's operable. My problem with the whole complaint-driven thing is, it's not fair. It depends on who your neighbor is. There are people, you know, I think you'd be pretty hard-pressed to drive around this town and, and find a whole lot of people that aren't in violation of one thing or another. And if your neighbor don't like you, or you're fighting with your neighbor, or whatever, you're getting called on for every little thing where the guy down the street is in violation way worse than you could ever be, but his neighbor doesn't care. I just don't find it a fair system, which is why I'm hoping that if we get the CSO, that can help with it being more spread out fairly and not so much just, you know, your neighbor calls on you for everything, but, you know, his neighbor doesn't call on him for anything, and he's in way worse violation than you could ever be. The other thing, I talked to Attorney Drell today, and we discussed that when Kara goes out on these calls, that she takes a look at the surrounding neighborhoods, maybe a couple block radius, so that it doesn't just look like one guy's getting picked on because his neighbor is a jerk. But that's just going to put more on her plate. So another thing that hopefully, you know, the CSO officer can help out with, or maybe Kara needs, needs help down here, you know, anyway, on top of that.
I did confirm that she's still doing that, so that's still being done.
You make a very good point, and it's absolutely true. These became ordinances because of complaints, and typically, many complaints from citizens concerning an issue that rose to the level that became a discussion for council. At least, that's the way it's
ticket. But I would suspect that she was given a ticket under the ordinance appropriately, and we can certainly look at that if you want to bring this. And any of you that have, you've got a book of ordinances, I think. Every time you're elected as an alderman, you're given that book of ordinances. If you have trouble getting to sleep at night, put that next to your bed and read through three, four pages, and circle the ones you don't like. Because when you think about it, we're 26,000 people, and we got a book of ordinances this thick. So bring them forward. We can redisess them. We can eliminate them. We can tweak them, whatever needs to be done.
They're also available online on the state's website if you care to use an iPad instead of having a big book in your lap.
Was there anything else?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. And then, we have general business. Alderman Snow has a lengthy presentation he wants to make tonight.
I don't know that it's lengthy. So in reviewing the ordinance, one of my things is to have all the outright uses put into special use. So if the dispensaries and the grow stations and the crafters, all need to go through a special use instead of just being outright, so that everybody can get in on weighing their decisions, not only us, but at the zoning meetings, the neighbors, and if so be, the neighbors can come to us at the time for a final vote. I think that gives everybody an opportunity to voice their opinions as to the appropriateness of that particular location or issue or problem they may be having. The other is, I'd like to, when the time comes to vote next week on it, is to remove the central business district out of it. That would be the downtown area here, or the dark red on the center of the map downtown by the river and State Street. So just wanted to throw those out, that those will be amendments that I'll be looking to make next week at the city council.
Since we talked about this last, I've done a little more research in a number of areas. There has been some considerable, since the law was passed, scientific information brought forward from the American Medical Association concerning use of cannabis and how it relates to heart disease. I'm concerned. I mean, everybody can elect. I mean, people smoke cigarettes until they drop dead at age 59 from heart failure. People eat chocolate cake until they have diabetes and drop dead from that. I mean, we can't legislate that kind of thing. However, I think it was a reasonable request that I made, that possibly we wait, because we're not going to get a license for a dispensary anytime soon, to see how it goes in Winnebago County. Because I have taken the time, since we talked about this last, to go and talk to the businesses along McFarland Road. And there was not a single business, except the pot dispensary place, that was pleased about what has happened to their area of doing business. They think it detracts from their business, and they think it should be, you know, it'd be nice if it was a nice wooded area, you know, big parking lot, people can pull in, have their privacy when they go stand in line and so forth. Over there, I mean, you're coming down Perryville Road, and every day, there's a big line, and they have to have private security at all of the surrounding businesses who are not allowing people to park in their parking lots. And it's gotten a little contentious a few times over there. So, you know, I don't care if people smoke pot. I mean, we decriminalized it a long time ago. It's a health risk. It is what it is. But I think we have an opportunity to, if we are going to allow it, to maybe weigh it a little bit before we make our final decision, because it's going to be, I would think, at least a year, maybe longer, before we even have an opportunity to have a dispensary license here and see how it goes. I will tell you that some people I talked to in Colorado, actually some time ago, said if they knew then what they know now, they would not have legalized it, because the taxation scheme didn't pan out, except initially. It created a lot of other social issues. And, you know, they had a lot of people move to Colorado, because it was going to be a good thing. So I just think we need to be cautious about this. This isn't about persecuting somebody for what their personal habits are. I don't think that's what it's about. But again, where do we stop? I just want everybody to really think it through and talk to your neighbors about it. Talk to the folks in your wards, and talk to the business people that you know, and see what they think. Yes, Alderman Freeman?
So I don't understand the whole, you know, security thing. Put up a sign that says, "Parking for this establishment only, or your vehicle will be towed." I mean, nobody wants to take that chance. And, you know, at the last meeting that we had, and you mentioned that you and Darcy like to go to brunch at Mary's, and they were all in arms about it and didn't like it. Well, it wasn't two nights later, I was watching the local news, and she was on there saying, "This is just an awesome, great thing, and we are actually going to partner with Sunnyside and give coupons, have coupons over there that the people can bring in for, you know, buy one, get one, or 10% off their meal."
Who was it?
She was representing Mary's. I don't know if she was the manager, the proprietor. She was, did you see that on the local news? She was on there doing an interview. So I don't know who you're talking to, but most of the people I know, Francesco's is like, "Come on, park in my lot. It's awesome. It's great. Bringing business to everybody over there."
That's not what was told to me, Marcia.
I did see the ad, and I thought it was kind of ironic in the fact that you're not allowed to smoke it on the premise. You need to be smoking it at home. And this, her whole thing was for the munchies. So that meant that you were already consuming it. I thought that was kind of ironic, but just tossing that out there.
Okay. And, you know, I haven't seen the footage. You know what station it was on, so I can go online and see it? Because I'd like to see it. Because I'd like to see who that was, and go back and talk to that person, you know, particularly, the same person I talked to, because that was not the impression, nor the comment that was made to me. So, but thanks for sharing. Okay. The last item on the agenda tonight is a resolution authorizing certain annual parades. We do this every year for the annual parade list. May have a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second. Crawford and Frank, questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The resolution is passed. We forward to City Council for final disposition, which brings us to the close of our evening. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Crawford. Have a second, please. Second by Porter. Additional, anybody have a comment tonight? If not, we are now adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.